Welcome to the Select Board's meeting prior to town meeting. My name is Heather Hamilton. I am the chair. Hold on, let me get to my script. We are gathering prior to the annual town meeting, so our meeting will be limited to a little less than two hours. And actually, I gave my word to the good people at BIG Brookline Interactive Group that we would have a hard stop at 6:50 so that they can get ready for town meeting. Like all meetings during the COVID-19 state of emergency, this meeting is being held remotely on the Zoom webinar platform and is being recorded. If you do not want your likeness to be recorded and archived, attendees are allowed to engage in the meeting without sharing their video and also have the option to call in by phone. Let's do announcements and updates before we open it up for public comment. I have one announcement, and that is, as many of you know, I co-chaired the Driscoll School Building Advisory Committee. And this morning during our Building Advisory Committee meeting, the committee voted to approve moving the Driscoll project forward to the Building Commission, School Committee, and Select Board for their approval of the GMP over the next week. This has been incredibly difficult because bids came in a lot higher than we were expecting, so we regrouped. We put it back out to bid. It was a big question mark what was going to happen. And we're confident with the numbers. So I'm very pleased to make that announcement. And anyone else? Miriam?
Yeah, I just quickly want to say at the beginning of the last meeting, I mentioned that I'm hard of hearing and I thanked Devon and the team for working so hard to get me closed captioning in the form of a transcript. I received a little bit of feedback that it looked like I wasn't paying attention at the last meeting. I wasn't looking at the screen. So I just want to message to everybody, that's because if I'm looking to the side, it's because I'm reading the transcript. So it may not look like I'm paying attention, but I promise I am. I do go back and forth if I can lip read really well and hear somebody really well. I'll watch them and lip read if I'm having trouble or if I'm getting tired, then I'll turn to the transcript or if I missed something. So I promise you I'm paying attention and thank you for the feedback.
There's no need to say that you're paying attention. Different people have different ways of paying attention. And I don't think people should insist that their way is the only way to pay attention. Looking off to the side may be the way that you keep focused, so.
Any other announcements? Okay, Raul. Oh, John, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, Raul, maybe, no?
Oh, no, he's going to handle public comment.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I wanted to say to Miriam and to the viewers, if it sometimes looks like I'm not paying attention, it's probably because I'm thinking about my dinner, but that's a different.
We all have our ways.
Belated happy birthday to Raul Fernandez. We did not serenade him prior to the start of this meeting, but you know, maybe when it's over.
That is a gift in itself. Thank you.
If you heard me joining along with the National Anthem, you would know for sure it's a gift in itself. But I did want to say on a serious note, something has developed just across the line in Newton, which is creating a lot of concern in Brookline. And I just want to kind of put it on the record that I hope we will at some near future meeting take up the question of whether we need to look into preventative measures that Brookline could take to deal with the possibility that someone would try to locate a gun store in Brookline. And it's no simple question. Newton is being quite vexed by this question because to simply say, well, we could just eliminate any chance of that through our zoning, that doesn't seem to work. And of course, the approach that Newton decided on and have not yet acted on was to try to find someplace on the periphery of town that would be the least likely to actually host a gun store without actually ruling it out through zoning. And that turned out to be right on the line with Brookline, the shopping area known as the street in Chestnut Hill. So Brookline will face some of the same problems Newton is facing in terms of how to deal with this challenge. But I think we are better off looking into it and deciding if we have options in dealing with it rather than waiting for it to just arrive on our doorstep overnight, so.
So it looks like Mel might want to say something. I know I checked in with Mel when Newton City Councilor at least had the decency to reach out to me and let me know that this was going on so I could notify some of our own constituents that this was being proposed. So I immediately contacted Mel and said, you know, can you look into this for the board and then brief us? So Mel, what have you found out so far?
I apologize for stepping on your lines, Mel. Sorry about that.
No, no, I don't think we were prepared to update it tonight, so it's good that you brought it up. But you know, I actually heard about this directly from the mayor involved in a meeting where she cautioned other towns that were participating in this meeting to be aware of the the issue that they're facing. So pretty quickly started to get familiar with it and was not aware of some of the issues, legal issues around this. There's really two parts to the process. One is a public safety review, which eventually would get resolved. It's initiated by at the local police level to determine the appropriateness of a firearms dealer. And if the, actually, it is something the Select Board could control because you in this town are the police commissioners. So I believe we have some control over that part of the process. But I want you to know that that's appealable to the state police and the Colonel of State Police has the jurisdiction over who is qualified to be a gun license dealer. And then the issue is the zoning. And that one, you know, I don't think I have any easy answers right away. We're definitely looking. We're looking at what Newton's doing and what others are doing. But you know, I won't say the town isn't vulnerable. I think all municipalities are vulnerable to a lot of businesses frankly that are objectionable to some.
Thank you for that update. Are there any other updates before we move into public comment?
Could I just mention that on our agenda, we had a brief COVID update?
Oh, yes.
To happen before the public comment, or how do you want to handle that?
Is Dr. Jett available or should we buy some time?
No, I believe he's available. I was going to start with a few minutes and then just turn it over him. It won't be more than five minutes total, but.
Okay. Let's do that now before public comment.
Okay, great. So it's been a little bit of time since we we gave a COVID update in the regular Select Board meeting and obviously a lot has changed since our last update. And obviously, the abrupt change in the federal and state policy around restrictions, especially face coverings, which of course have been an issue in Massachusetts and in Brookline. But the change in the policy will require the town to either, you know, continue to seek exclusions, which I think we probably have legal rights to pursue or to get in line. And I think at this point, we're prepared with, I think, every other city in town from my aware of is to get in line on May 29th with the state guidelines that the governor is putting in place. And that means for the most part, no face covering requirements outdoors and in many indoor settings. So, you know, I know a lot of us are concerned about that. I think Brookline was clearly a leader in face coverings, and I think the science has proven that face coverings did a great deal. But the science is evolving. Clearly, the vaccination is a success and the numbers are trending well. And I think it's just at this point in time that, you know, all cities and towns, our whole society really has to get in a consistent pattern towards a new normal. And so on May 29th, the town will be eliminating all of its current restrictions and getting in sync with the state. And then probably more importantly for a lot of us is June 15th, when some of the emergency at this point, I think all of the emergency rules and orders that have allowed us to govern in a different way and manage in a different way are going to be lifted. And so obviously, we're concerned. I think the biggest concern for you as a town government is what are we going to do at our public meetings? Right now, we can hold a remote meeting as we are today, but that, as of June 15th, may not be the case. We're expecting or hoping that the governor will create a transitional period or and/or a hybrid approach where it might be easier to meet more remotely. But as you recall, before the pandemic, only we had to have a quorum of the board physically present for any other board members to be remotely. And then, of course, we never really dealt with people participating in the meeting remotely, whether it's a public hearing or not. So those are things we're going to be working on, but I think that's pretty much the extent of my update. And asked Dr. Jett to fill in what he'd like to say about the COVID situation. Dr. Jett?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Clickner. Good evening, select board members. So I'll be brief. You know, one of the things that we have to do collectively is because we have a public health emergency order in place. So we have to lift our order on June 15th to allow us to fall in line with the state. It's still encouraged that people that are unvaccinated continue to wear masks in public and in buildings. And right now, we have, according to the latest data, have 26,000 plus that have been fully vaccinated. So that's 36% of the populace. So we still have a lot of people not vaccinated, but I'm hoping over the next three weeks, we reach the threshold of 50%. Because we have a lot of people that have had the first dose, which closer to 50% as of now. So that's trending good signs. As last year at this time, our COVID numbers are at the same baseline. We're averaging about 18 cases per week, which is similar to what we averaged last year at this date, which goes to show that, you know, temperature is available, that's closely associated with COVID. So don't know what lifting of the mask mandate would do to the populace. I'm sure we will see the impacts, but I am most concerned about the impact as we move from the summer back to, you know, colder climate. And so at that point, you know, I'll stop and entertain any questions anybody might have.
Great. Miriam?
Hi, Dr. Jett. It's nice to actually meet you. We've emailed a few times and played a little phone tag. So my understanding is that there's an advisory council on public health. Have you met with them? What are your plans to meet with them? I assume you'll be meeting over the summer. I just, I would love to understand a little bit more how that relationship is evolving because there's so much going on and I assume there's going to be a lot still changing over the summer as well.
Yeah, so first of all, congratulations again. So the advisor council, we did meet, they did advise me, and we were to lift our mask mandate. And it was going to be for everybody that they still had to wear masks that was within six feet, regardless if it was vaccinated or not. And that was going to affect tomorrow. But in order to be in line because COVID, the data that was pushed out by CDC changed between the time we met a couple of weeks ago, we decided to fall in line with what the new recommendations came out from the state of Massachusetts, so we'd be in succinct with them. Now, usually, we meet before town meeting, but after town meeting, everybody is usually on vacation. So we won't pick up and meet again unless there's an emergency that would happen or we need to call a special meeting, and that probably will be until unless something drastically changes.
Okay, thank you. I would say, I mean, obviously, I'm new here, but I would impress upon you that I think there's still a lot going on with COVID. And it seems to be not meeting between now and August is a very long time to not have a meeting of the Advisory Council on Public Health while we are still at the tail end of the pandemic. So I hope you will reconsider that.
Yeah, so I would definitely take a look at it, but you know, to go before we fell in line, when we were following, not following the state, the ACPH meant more. But now that we are following the state guidelines, so that's something drastically happened, like we have an impacted increase in COVID numbers. You know, everybody tend to be going out the country, which is why we usually tend to do not meet. But if something is pressing, we will be prepared to address it at that time and have a meeting. If things changes that we need to, I need to bring them together, of course, that could happen at any moment's notice as we have done throughout the pandemic. So we've been often be, usually meet once a month, but we have shifted those dates depending on what has happened with the state and local and with CDC.
John, were you trying to raise your hand? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I wanted to ask you, if you would, to comment on, excuse me, the Brookline's performance in terms of the percentage of the population that has received at least one dose or two doses of the vaccines. I did my own checking recently, and I was just trying to check, in fact, on the reports that came out today. What I saw in the state DPH, Department of Public Health, weekly report indicated that, for whatever reason, Brookline's percentage of vaccination is lower than Newton's, lower than just about all of our neighboring communities, even lower than Boston's, according to the DPH. And it caused me to just wonder, is there some kind of a data reporting issue here? Or is there some reason why Brookline would be lagging neighboring municipalities in terms of our percentage of vaccination in the population?
That's a good question, a big surfer question. So there's a lot of factors. One being, we don't really have a vaccination site. We're not close to one. A lot of people get their vaccinations hospitals. And you know, Beth Israel contacted me, they vaccinated, they are vaccinating people in Brookline. But it's different when you have a hospital in the community that's open all the time. So to me, I really think it's more about access to it. Two, we're in line with everybody else in terms of how many people have actually received doses, at least the first dose. I think within the next three weeks, Brookline would be on par with everybody else because everybody will receive the second dose and we will see more people fully vaccinated. So we'll be at the 50% mark at that time.
I know this is anecdotal, but I pre-registered myself as somebody who didn't meet, you know, any of the criteria. I was just, you know, a member of the public and April 19th came and went. And I didn't get an appointment until really the end of April, maybe even the first of May. And my second shot isn't scheduled until next week, so I'm sure people found themselves in the same situation that I did.
Yeah, and I would just say, thank you for that comment. There was a lot of issues with sign up. The COVID vaccine was provided to communities that had the greatest need and had a high equity issue or had greater amount of COVID cases. So, you know, due to the factors of how we handled COVID and how our cases were low, Brookline has received very few vaccinations, vaccines to distribute. Now, I am hoping that that will change in the future. We have been able to address homebound. We have been able to address first responders. And if we had vaccine left over, we've tried to take care of the populace that fit into the criteria eligibility at that time. But we have a lot of factors that are not aligned and not on the same par with the surrounding communities.
John?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're not disputing the accuracy of the data. In other words, the data does accurately reflect the percentage of our population that has been vaccinated either the first time or double dose?
Correct.
I just wanted to ask you, does the fact that we are behind, granted, it's kind of, you know, we're nearing, you know, the end of the game in terms of reaching a really good level of vaccination among the population. But still, does this warrant some kind of accelerated effort on Brookline's part to make up the difference between us and some of our neighboring communities and how we're doing in terms of vaccinations?
Well, so we are working on a campaign to get people vaccinated. It would be a lot easier if we had actual more vaccination sites in Brookline, including the Health Department distributing it. But despite that, we tend to highlight places where people can get vaccinated. And then I'm hoping, I do have some vaccines left from open to state that allow me to distribute that because we do have clinics coming up July 12th, actually, June 12th and I think July 24th, that we will make that announcement in a few weeks to try to expedite some of this process. And so I'm still making requests to the state. The more vaccine we have on site, the more we can actually push a greater campaign to get people vaccinated and catch up with our surrounding communities.
I hope people that are watching this realize it's probably easier than ever to get vaccination. If you haven't, if you haven't done so already, someone in our household was shopping at Costco in Dedham yesterday, and they were basically just taking walk-ins. I mean, you know, they had, you know, vaccinations for anybody who asked for them. So I think people need to realize that it's never too late to get vaccinated. And in fact, it's probably easier than ever to get vaccinated now.
Yeah, and I'll just make one last statement for the community. You know, in order to return to what is the new normal, and especially when you don't know if somebody's been vaccinated, we don't know if somebody has COVID, and they might not be wearing a mask and you want to travel, move around, you know, I highly encourage everybody to get a vaccination. To me, that's the real essence of the matter in order to turn to what the new normal is and go maskless. I highly encourage.
Can I ask a question? I got my vaccination a couple of months ago at CVS in Cambridge. I don't, I didn't notice whether CVS or Walgreens here in Brookline are providing vaccinations. Do you know?
Yes, sir. They are providing vaccinations.
It's just that there were no appointments available because we only have a limited amount. Raul?
Yes, thank you. My questions have been asked and answered. I just wanted to offer also that for folks listening, Boston University will be requiring students returning to campus to be vaccinated, except in limited circumstances, and are encouraging faculty and staff to do the same. I know Northeastern is doing the same thing. I'm not sure about BC or others, but hopefully other colleges will follow suit too. I think the key here is making sure that those folks that are most vulnerable are vaccinated and protected as well. So, you know, I join my colleagues in saying anything we can do to help spread the word or encourage folks to get vaccinated. Happy to do that. Thanks.
Miriam?
One quick add on to that because I think Raul made a good point, which is, and by the way, Harvard is doing the same for students, is that even if you are not vulnerable yourself, there are subset of individuals that can't get vaccinated or won't be protected in the same way. So you're being vaccinated helps protect them. And I think that's an important thing to understand as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jett, for that update. And Mel?
Thank you, and good luck and stay safe.
Thank you. Let's move into public comment.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. We do have a few rules I'd like to share. Each person is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Please refrain from personal attacks or addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. Devon Fields will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. And when your time is up, please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. That's it. Devon, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
At this time, there are 13 attendees and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Best job on the board, I'm telling you. We look forward to more public comment in the future.
Well, I know somebody who does want to say one more thing. Miriam?
Great, thank you. I did want to mention that due to the efforts of the great efforts of the school, we are offering, the schools, three of the schools will be having vaccination clinics. Actually, I think one of them was today. So if you want to get vaccinated, there are six sites that are getting set up. And there's going to be one at Baker, Florida, Rough and Ridley, and the high school. And I don't have the exact details, but we'll get those. Those will be available. Those must be available at the Brooklyn Public School website.
Excellent. Okay, let's move into our calendar. First miscellaneous and the first up is approving the meeting minutes from May 11th. So I will move those. And Bernard?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Because our next item, I think, is not technically able to be dealt with until 5:30, I will do my best to read out all of the miscellaneous items in the consent agenda. Okay, question of approving extra work order number one for Green Mountain Pipeline Services LLC to compensate for additional unit costs of linear sewer pipe lined and to close out contract PW 18-22 for sewer system rehabilitation in the amount of $2,040. Question of approving contract number PW 21-15 Water Distribution System Improvements with AD Peon Lenee LLC for the installation of a new 12-inch water main on Hammond Street in the amount of $1,004,859.20. Question of approving amendment number 22 for the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associate. Question of approving amendment number twenty-two for the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associate Associations for additional testing and design services in the amount of fourteen thousand fourteen dollars. Question of approving amendment number twenty-three for the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associates for additional design services in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety-one. Question of approving G M P change order number eleven, P C C O zero one eight for the high school expansion project with Skanska in the amount of negative nine thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Question of approving and executing the contract with Mass Bay Electrical Corporation for the Cypress Street at Tappan and Cypress Street at Davis Avenue Signal Improvements in the amount of one hundred and two thousand dollars. Question of approving the following appropriation transfer request with the Human Resources Department Budget from Human Resources Professional Dues, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. As well as the Human Resources Education Conferences Fund in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to Human Resources Applicant Tracking, thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Question of approving the following transfer within the Fire Department Budget from Fire Admin Uniforms and Protective Clothing in the amount of nine thousand five hundred and five dollars to Fire Admin Public Safety Equipment, nine thousand five hundred and five dollars. Question of approving the following applications for Lodging House Agents. Location, ten seventy-seven Beacon Street for Resident Agent Marissa Groons. Location one thousand six sixty-one Beacon Street for Resident Agent Caitlin Tomling. Location, one hundred and twenty-three Longwood Ave for Resident Agent Barbara Para. Location, two hundred and forty-one Kent Street for Resident Agent Elizabeth Solarzano. Location, one thousand two twenty-nine Beacon Street for Resident Agent Hagos Barhain. Location, sixteen William Street for Resident Agent Curtis Perry. Location, one thousand forty-three and one thousand forty-five Beacon Street for Resident Agent Larry McCoy. Okay, that is the omnibus vote. Bernard.
Hi.
Uh, Raul.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Miriam.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much. And I believe we are just one minute early before we can take our next agenda item. Let me see what that is. Oh, okay, the Pell letter for one one hundred and eighth Center Street. Do we have? Allison, yes, thank you. Oh, you're muted.
I have presented you a revised draft that's been in your packet. Um, and I hope it meets your approval. If so, uh, we're seeking an uh authorization for the chair to sign it, and I will submit it tomorrow to D H C D as required.
Excellent. Bernard.
Yeah, my uh, it's a great letter. My only comment is um on the, let's see, first page. Second paragraph from the bottom, you use a phrase enthusiastic public testimony. I think that's gonna uh cause some reaction. Uh, there was, it wasn't unanimous uh support for the project. So I think a better choice of words would be in order. For example, um, you know, uh I can't think of another example, but yeah, something along the lines of, you know, many people uh supported the project.
A significant portion?
Yeah, significant portion of the people supported the project. I I I don't want to uh sort of denigrate the people who uh didn't support it for whatever the reasons. They're not denigrate, but minimize, you know, the their comments.
Excellent. Is that all the feedback? John?
Well, and for for those um listening and who might be wondering, um, you know, does this uh Pell letter signify the end of an opportunity for the public to comment? Allison, would you mind just kind of letting people know what comes next uh and what what future opportunities are there that folks who do have concerns or who want to come out and support this project can say so in in a public forum?
Thank you. Um, this is the very, very beginning. Um, I fully expect D H C D to issue a favorable response very shortly, in which case Hebrew Senior Life will apply to the town for a comprehensive permit. Under law, we will um issue of a notice for your butters within three hundred feet to schedule a public hearing within uh thirty days. And as a reminder, that that now includes tenants. The planning department has been aggressively reaching out to tenants uh for several months. Then it begins. The public hearing will open and there will be constant opportunities over potentially six to eight months um for community input. Either um at the meetings themselves, or we certainly encourage written comments to be submitted to the planning department, which we will share with the Sony Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
And all information will be posted online as soon as we receive it.
Great. Any other comments by my fellow board members? Otherwise, I will, oh, yes. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, and Allison, thank you for revising the letter um and capturing um the mood of the board on this. Um, I think I think uh moving forward, it's really helpful because, you know, to have a community that um that says, you know, development is neither all good nor nor all bad. There are, there are things that that we're looking for as a community. And when we see projects that that meet what it is that we're looking for, we're happy to say, you know, this looks like a really good project for Brookline. Um, and I think it gives us a little bit more weight when we um when we levy criticisms on projects that come our way. Because we're not the folks that just say no every time, right? Um, so I just think this is great. I think it's helpful. Um, you know, as we think about what it is that we as a board want to um incentivize within within the community and signal um to others that are looking potentially to build in Brookline, uh, you know, the 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 nature of of what it is that we're looking for as a community. So thank you for this. I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I will move to authorize the chair to sign the letter to D H C D conveying the select board's comments on one hundred and eighth Center Street Application for Project Eligibility. Bernard.
Hi.
Raul.
Hi.
John.
And just to specify, will that include the the change suggested by Bernard Green?
Yes, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Miriam.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Um, I believe that we have uh Mandarin Gourmet, Jamie Thang. We will be considering a new common particular uh license for this entity.
Correct. So um if a principal uh Jamie or others could could uh participate, um, I think we're looking for you to explain uh the change of of what you're what you're doing here at this location. I believe this was a prior uh prior restaurant at this location, believe with the same name. So it's a change of ownership, I believe.
Jamie, are you able to speak about your business?
Could maybe take the next item and uh circle back and make sure they're I believe it's time for that hearing if you want to do that.
Okay. Devin, are you uh troubleshooting?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Uh, so next up, we're hearing from Chris Yorty uh on behalf of Hemlock Grill. This is a public hearing. So I will open it at this moment, but we will hear first from the um applicant.
Just on you, oh, yeah, there you go. Hi, guys. Good to see everyone again. I'm not sure exactly what it is you want to hear from me at this point.
I would go over um basically who you have on staff. Do they know their way around our alcohol laws? Start there.
Yes. Um, so right now I have my partner, Justin Baker and Colin Kylie. Uh, they have worked for me and with me for, I guess, five to six years now, uh depending on the individual. Uh, one in a beverage manager capacity, the other one as a in a serving capacity with a heavy background in bartending and bar management. So these are guys that have taken their tips classes and and done all that for for about a decade now. Um, so both of them have a background in both fine dining and uh, you know, work their way up through the system as many do through college bars and sporting bars and things like that. Uh, so they've been in a lot of different situations uh dealing with the public. Recognizing folks that uh have have had their fill um and checking identifications and all that stuff. It's just been a big part of all their lives, which is, you know, me surrounding myself with people that that this was not a new thing to them. I know we're gonna have a lot of people on the ground that this is new for. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that the those at the top uh have a lot of experience with this uh as I do. And I've managed the liquor license in Cambridge uh previously. I was not the named manager. I was the general manager of an equity partner at Pearson Company. From till about two thousand nineteen, from two thousand twelve.
Excellent. And this is actually um at our uh mu- municipal golf course, correct?
It is.
Great. Uh, I see that your proposed hours are from, I think, ten to ten?
Yes.
Great. Um, you know, just be mindful that is a predominantly residential setting, but ten P M shouldn't be that bad.
No, and uh most of ours is, our action is all on the backside. Not only side for the most part, but uh and the driving range uh should be closing earlier than that as it will get dark, you know, around eight thirty. So the driving range would close earlier, and that's really the only uh residential facing area. The rest is all in the back patios, which really shows the golf course.
Bernard.
Uh, I just wanted to uh alert you to the fact that Brookline um is not Cambridge and we have some peculiar or unique regulations. Have you made yourself familiar with them?
Got a long note from Lieutenant Murphy um two days ago uh that I'm going, I actually have a meeting set with my staff for them to review it, for us to all review that together. So I do understand there's always some differences between the jurisdictions. And myself and Justin Lawson have started to review all those together with even even his golf crew, because uh great thing about Justin uh eh that I that I've enjoyed working with Justin is that he is acutely aware of the way hospitality and regulations can go hand in hand, that everyone really can can work well within the rules as long as everyone is aware of them and knows how to um enforce and discuss them with the guests in a productive manner. Um, so we have uh time set for even the golf staff to be aware of these rules as well.
Great.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Um, okay, so.
I think Mr. Vanscoa has.
Yes, John.
And I um, I just have to ask, uh, how did you come up with the name?
Well.
We have. Menu, I hope.
Well, we we uh, you know, actually, early on, Justin Lawson was talking a lot about his changes at the golf course over the last year and and uh pulling out a lot of trees to open up the course. And I actually have heard a lot of good things from the uh the golfers in the last month. But uh, so we started thinking about that, things that are native to the area. Um, we really liked Olmstead as well. That was something that was a top contender to incorporate that some way. You know, we had an email chain of about a hundred and twenty emails, and at some point I kept leaving the D B A off of applications for vendors and things like that. And they all started emailing back saying, you gotta pick something, you gotta pick something. And I I just liked the ring of it, to be honest. And we had a little logo designed uh by uh Alex Science, one of my partners, uh his wife. And I kind of, I just liked that one the most. The hemlock was was interesting. And I know somebody's commented about uh, I forget that Shakespearean um character that was, I think drank something infused with hemlock and that's what poisoned him or something, but uh I only looked at it afterwards. I didn't remember that from high school.
You might get some double takes if you have a cocktail on the menu.
Uh, yeah, that's where that actually came up because we thought about that. Somebody mentioned that we should consider that.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so let's uh hear from the public if there's anyone that wants to speak.
At this time, there are eleven attendees and no one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate that they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, well, then I will close this public hearing. Um, and maybe we should vote. Uh, so I will move to approve the application of a seasonal all alcohol beverages license for Gamehenge Golf LLC doing business as Hemlock Grill at twelve eighty-one West Roxbury Parkway. Proposed manager of record is Christopher Yorty. Proposed operating hours are Monday through Sunday, ten A M to ten P M. Proposed alcohol beverage service hours are Monday through Sunday, ten A M to ten P M. Bernard.
Hi.
Raul.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Miriam.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much.
Good luck, Chris.
Have we heard from Jamie Thang?
Unfortunately, it looks like they were having internet issues and were completely booted from the meeting. I have sent an email. So I'm I'm hoping to get in touch with them, but I suggest you just continue on and hopefully we can just tack this to the end of your meeting.
Excellent. Okay, so turning to warrant articles, uh, I see Melissa.
Good evening, Melissa Goff, Deputy Town Administrator. I have a couple of updates for the board on articles that are on your agenda. Uh, Article eleven. Last night, the advisory committee had their meeting and they have actually come in line with the petitioner motion, which is also the board's position as well. Uh, the Freedman Amendment has also been pulled, so there is no action that's needed other than, you know, you you your current position is supporting the petitioner motion, so there's nothing further you need to do. Article seventeen.
Uh, actually, can I ask a question? Um, does the petitioner's mo- motion uh call for a bylaw provision? As I recall, it that that's what uh that that's what the advisory committee was concerned about.
Yes, but they've they've now changed their position and are supportive of the position, the petitioner's motion.
Okay, which which would uh create a bylaw provision with the specific language.
So the the uh petitioner's motion does not specify the language. The advisory committee had previously tried to insert the statement into their motion. And they have now reversed.
Oh, that's right. Okay, got it.
Uh, the next article is Article seventeen. Uh, the advisory committee also took this up last night and they are now on board with the Warren Dempsey New Compromise Motion. So everyone is in line on this one as well. Uh, so no further action is needed from the board. Article twenty-sixth, um, when we.
I'm sorry, can I ask? Um, well, I'm in favor too, but hasn't it changed since we last voted?
That's right. That's right. I was just realizing that. Um, so you had an earlier version of the compromise motion, which then got amended even further. Um, so if you are in your uh combined reports, let me just call that up. You want to be looking for supplement four, which is new compromise motion. There's a clean and a marked up version of that. Um, page two fifty-five in your combined reports is where you can find uh the motion.
Can I ask uh how it deals with the um condo association approvals? Because that that was a key issue that I think um a lot of people are concerned about.
Yep, I can look for that section in the bylaw. Um, if there are any um sponsors of of the uh revised motion that want to help me out, um, I'd be happy to see them. But I will try to find that specific language.
Think I see any of them in the attendees.
And, oh, it's, no. Does this, does this in cl- include the Pell, what was known as the Pell? Does this, does this include the Pelkey, what was known as the Pelkey Amendment that was going to be offered? So this is, that's already sort of worked into the final version of the article that will be.
So let me read the, the information on the condo association. That is, that was the Pelkey Amendment, the amendment she was trying to address. So that is on section C, which is on page 272, our page three of supplement number five. You can see the markup. We are short term rental is part of a condominium association certification signed by the condominium association that the condominium master due bylaws or other governing documents expressly permit the proposed short term rental.
Okay, got it. They were back and forth on that. Yeah, good. So we have to revote.
Okay, so why don't we move reconsideration? And then we'll talk about where we come out. So I move for reconsideration. Bernard?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
So now you would want to move the motion offered, the new compromise motion that was in the night one supplements also referenced as supplement four in the combined reports.
Okay, is everybody, okay, Raul?
Yeah, I just want to, and Melissa, correct me when I'm wrong, but my understanding is the options before us right now before town meeting will be this motion 17. And should it fail, then the next option is essentially, because 15 is not being moved is my understanding, then the next option is an all out ban on, on STRs. Is there anything else in between?
Yeah, the board has already taken their position on the contingent motion under 14. You did not support it. So if you wanted to reverse that position, that might be something that you'd want to consider. That's not currently on your calendar.
And that's not, yeah, that's not what I mean. I mean, a town meeting, let's say tonight, if we get to it tonight, I hope we will. That that's, those are our options, right? So it's either 17. And then if 17 fails, the only option we have is to vote up and down a ban on STRs, is that right?
That's correct.
I say that only because I'm not thrilled with everything that's in 17, but I'm also not thrilled with the alternative. Less thrilled with the alternative, yeah.
Well, they're also, you know, we do need a two thirds vote of town meeting in order to make this whole thing pass. So that, I think that's a high, that's a high bar at this point, given all the layers that are involved here. But yes, that's, that's what we're faced with is 17 is the new motion under all of these articles. There was no controversy under 14. No, 15 is not being moved. 16 was just enforcement and then 17.
Just to follow up, does 14 require two thirds also, or is that a simple majority?
The zoning requires a two thirds motion as well.
Okay.
Heather, I see a question. I see a question from.
Yes, Miriam, sorry.
Sorry, and to, just to, to finish Raul's line of thinking, because I agree, I actually liked 17 better before it had the Pelkey Amendment wrapped into it. But if we don't pass 17, but we do pass 14, it's my understanding that 14 may not actually be legally enforceable, that that would set us up potentially for a lawsuit. Is that that we can't all out ban STRs, that that, that puts us in a position to have that questioned? That legality, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I think we're currently being sued. So I think in either situation, we, there likely would be litigation.
Thank you.
And doesn't, doesn't 14 give us a sort of bare bones regulatory scheme? So that if the lawsuit is successful, we have something in place?
So the, the 14 would essentially indicate where STRs are legal in the town. Right now it's, it's silent.
So it'll be bare bones regulatory scheme as a, to get around the fact that if the lawsuit is successful, we have nothing.
Right, it's not an all out ban.
So should I still move the language that Melissa read off? How do people?
If you don't, I will.
Why don't you go for it, Bernard?
I move Warren Article 17 as amended by the, who, Dempsey, Karen, Pelkey, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Amendment passed by the, or adopted by the advisory committee.
Okay.
That's accurate.
So Bernard?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Let's see how this goes at town meeting.
Article 26 is our last item tonight. And when we had last spoken about Article 26, in, in the midst of the meeting, I was getting messages that the moderator had some issues that needed to be sorted out with the petitioners. That has since happened, they've provided a revised motion, which can be found on your combined reports, which is Article 26, supplement one, also on page 522. And that is what is, you had, you had voted an earlier version of this article. So this is the new corrected version based on feedback from the moderator.
Right. So do we have to reconsider?
Yes, because you had, you had voted the last version that was available. And so this is a newer version. This is essentially what the advisory committee and the petitioners are supporting. So we would need to come in line with them.
Okay, is that what everybody wants to do?
Could you tell us what is new?
I think it was just references and some numbering and I, I'm not sure the specifics of the issues that the moderator raised, but I think that they were related to interpretations around the CBA. Because the moderator was previously a member of the CBA, so it was just providing some clarity on that. But I don't, I don't think the petitioner is here.
Melissa, is it the red line comments? They look pretty banal.
Yeah, I think they're pretty benign. They're not, you know, nothing really substantial has changed from the earlier version that you, that you had. It's just slightly different. So we just need to reconcile.
It has to do with numbering, doesn't it?
The numbering was already addressed by the petitioner. She had seen an earlier version. So she was, you know, the, the version she had looked at was cleaned up and then she had further edits on that. So.
Okay, so should we move reconsideration?
Sure.
Okay, I move reconsideration of Warren Article 26. All those in favor, Bernard?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So now I'm moving the language that is currently proposed.
The petitioner motion is found in supplement one of the combined reports.
Okay, the petitioner motion as found in the combined reports. Bernard?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we moving on to the special town meeting?
Let's.
So I don't know if Deborah's in the audience. I don't have any update for you on Article one or two. I know we've only just recently executed the warrant for this town meeting. So I don't know that there's any language or motions ready yet. But I was hoping that maybe she would be here to provide an update on where she is.
Okay, and this is scheduled for next Thursday?
Correct. So if, if nothing's ready today, we would have to take it up on Tuesday.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to look in the attendees list.
I don't see Deborah there.
Okay. Okay. Um, this was the very last thing on our agenda, correct?
Yes.
Let me.
We still have to go back to that licensing matter. If you want to do that. I would just say, you know, I've had a number of conversations over a period of time with Deborah. They've all been very cordial and respectful. You know, I have told her about the way I perceive the flexibility so far in the ARP, but that I just couldn't make a commitment. You know, a definitive commitment till we, we had more information, but I, I thought that was satisfactory to her and I believe my understanding is she's working on a resolution to sort of document that, that status, but I'm not sure exactly where that's at.
Okay. What are the odds that we're going to have the information that you want by next Thursday?
Unlikely.
Okay. Um, okay, so Raul, sorry.
Sure, a question from Mel actually, just procedurally, if, if this should pass at town meeting and we do find later on that we can use ARP funds for this purpose, can we use those funds instead of, of taking out of the regular budget?
Yes, I don't think there's an obligation to spend money if you have another source of funds. That's my understanding. I think what we're worried about a little bit is that, you know, it'll get approved. And yet we don't have a funding source and so we'll have to, we'll probably have to reconcile that in the fall when we do some other budget reconciliations.
So I guess the petitioner for the first business is still having difficulties. I have a proposal. So this does not involve a liquor license. This is just to approve the common victicular. I'd hate to make them wait. So how do people feel about approving this maybe conditionally? I'm open to.
Do we have all the approvals from the departments? But I thought I saw something missing.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
As I understand it, this is taking over an existing restaurant at the same location and to my knowledge, and I talked to Tiffany today about this, did not, did not appear to be any, anything out of the ordinary. It will be coming back to you on the liquor license because the fire restaurant did have a license, but they haven't been able to get that timing yet and they want to open the restaurant.
So how do other people feel about approving this? We could maybe attach a condition? Why don't we attach the condition?
What, what, what do we have to? All we're really saying is that they can serve food and saw their menu. I am told it's a good menu, so.
Okay, why don't we just flat out approve it? They have to come back before us for their liquor license. I guess that's what I was thinking in conditional, but we can't make it conditional because they haven't gotten that yet. So this is really the, the condition for their alcohol license. So.
Can I just ask a question about this? Is there anything in the law anywhere that requires that, you know, when, when a license is under consideration by the board that the applicant has to appear before the board?
No.
It's just practice.
It's just practice, okay.
Yep.
And, and this is a common victular license, not, not an alcohol? I thought I heard you say.
Yes. Yeah, no, no, it's just common victular.
It will be an alcohol, but they have to come back for that. They weren't prepared to do that and they didn't want to wait for their common victular license.
A lot of people on whose takeout plans are riding on this, so not to put pressure on people, you know.
Okay, so why don't I move the language? Okay, let's move the language. The language is move to approve the application of new common victicular DTJ Group Incorporated DBA, doing business as Mandarin Gourmet at 1020 West Roxbury Parkway. Hours of operation will be Sunday to Thursday, 11:30 AM to 9:30 PM. Friday to Saturday, 11:30 AM to 10:30 PM. Seating will consist of 132 seats. Bernard?
First of all, most difficult part about being chair was pronouncing this word. I think it's victular. Victuals from the old, what was the name of that show? There was a hillbilly show on TV that's very popular. And they would have victuals every day. Anyway, I think, I think it's victular, but you know, maybe we need to get an expert to, to tell us how to pronounce that word. I'm not sure I was pronouncing it right. Anyway, aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye, and the show was The Real McCores.
I've heard of that show.
Is Daisy? Yeah.
And the chair votes aye.
It's another show.
Beverly Hillbillies.
No, had Daisy something or other in it. I'll look it up.
Dukes of Hazzard?
No, no, it was before your time.
That was before.
Before you were born.
Okay, is that all of our business? Has anybody heard from Deborah?
We did try to get ahold of Deborah. And I did check the phone numbers of the people that called in. Those were not Deborah's numbers. Nobody's been able to get ahold of Deborah.
Okay, um, I don't want to hold staff up or big up before a very important night. So let's just give it one more minute and then move to adjourn.
So the plan is to just reschedule it at a next meeting next week before Thursday? Well, that's two, I guess that would be Tuesday.
Yeah, I, I mean, we could talk about it right now, but I don't even know how I would really vote on it. It's.
It's hard to know if you don't know the motion.
Yeah.
Under the articles.
We're just going to fly through town meeting now that everybody agrees on everything. Not.
Oh, did Jamie make it? We approved your stuff. Good luck. Okay.
And by the way, I think it was Beverly Hillbillies. There is another show from the 50s. I just can't figure out what it was.
Glad we got that sorted out before we left. Okay, so let's move to adjourn. Okay.
End the meeting.
We're going to.
We're not coming back.
Thank you very much, Brookline Interactive Group.
See you at town meeting.